Good evening. What a beautiful room to look out on tonight. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Sonoma City Council to order and ask you to please silence, pagers, buzzers, cell phones. You know, I don't know if you can do with toddlers. I tried, never worked, but you know, we'll see. Let them make noise, that's right. Would you all please rise as you are able and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Gurney?
Present.
Councilmember Wellender?
Here.
Councilmember Dean?
Present.
Councilmember Farah Rivas?
Present.
Mayor Lo?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we have public participation in person, and on Zoom, we had no closed session. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Aye, seconded.
Moved and seconded. The clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gurney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Councilmember Farah Rivas?
Aye.
Mayor Lo?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Right, and the next thing we will have will be comments from the public on anything that is not on the agenda. So if you have something to share with us that's not on the agenda, now is the time. Is there anyone here to do that? All right, anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we'll be bringing in Mike Caruso first.
Thank you. Mr. Caruso? Are there anyone else?
Do you have the, do you have the statement by chance that we prepared?
I don't have the statement prepared, but we-
Would it be worth just reminding the public that topics that do not relate to city business are not allowed or-
They're out of order, yes. Topics not related to city business are out of order, and quite clearly, the callers, we're not here to offer anything with regard to city business.
And if the council would like to, as a matter of unanimous consent, you can, you can just continue any public comment till the end of the meeting or-
Do we have a lot of people on Zoom? How many people do we have? Because we have very important people to recognize tonight.
We have about six right now.
I would recommend you vote to move it to the end of the meeting.
Okay, without objection, we will move it to the end of the meeting. We have people here that are waiting patiently, and we have some nice things to say about them, and I don't want to waste a minute in doing that. And we have children, absolutely. Thank you so much, and thank you, Monique, for such a good job on the mute button. So, let's move on to meeting dedications. I believe we have a meeting dedication?
Yes, we do. So I would like to dedicate this meeting to Charles, also known as Chuck Young, and he passed away in Sonoma on October 22nd. I didn't know Chuck Young, but I was very moved by the article in the Index Tribune, and also by the comments about his life made by the Nobel Prize winner Jared Diamond, who was speaking at the 1029 Sonoma Speakers Series. That event was also dedicated to Chuck Young. So he was a UCLA chancellor from 1968 to 1997. He moved to Sonoma into 2012 and began serving on the Sonoma Valley Education Foundation Board of Directors. At age 85, he served as the interim superintendent of Sonoma Valley Unified School District to support the district during a leadership crisis. He was deeply committed to education and diversity and equity, and so I think tonight it's very appropriate that we would be dedicating this meeting to him. And he was also very dedicated to education nationally, statewide, and to our Sonoma Public Schools.
Thank you, Patricia, that's absolutely wonderful, thank you. We will dedicate this to Mr. Young. Any other dedications this evening? I would just like to do, it's not a dedication, but this is, November 1st kicks off Native American History Month, and as a recognition of that, I would like to just do a simple land acknowledgement respective of the month, and that is this. "The City of Sonoma acknowledges Indigenous peoples as the traditional stewards of the land. Let be acknowledged that the City of Sonoma is located within the traditional homelands of the Indigenous peoples collectively known as the Coast Miwok and the Southern Pomo." Thank you. At this point, we do have council members' reports and comments, but seeing a full house, if it would be all right, I'd like to be able to move the acknowledgements forward. I'm seeing Mr. Wellender's head, everybody, we all agree. Okay, wonderful. So let's move on to the presentations. See how we run this? It runs beautifully, we just kind of go with the flow. All right? So the first, the first presentation is a recognition of Nick Moline and Charles Mucheler for their distinguished service to the City of Sonoma, and I'd like to recognize Public Works Director Mike Berger for this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we're recognizing two special people that have together combined for approximately 35 years of service to the City of Sonoma. And because I'm relatively new to Public Works, I'm going to defer to our operations manager, Chris Peg, and let him give them due justice.
Wonderful, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, so Chris Peg, Public Works Operations Manager. We're here tonight just to recognize an exceptionally long, committed-
Chris, can you hear it?
Sure, sure. So I'm just here to personally thank and extend, on the city's behalf, the gratitude for incredibly long career of public service by Mr. Mucheler and Mr. Moline, who, as Mike Berger said, have put in a combined 35 years with the city. They've both been in the Parks Department, they've done some of the most thankless, but nonetheless essential duties, turning in many, many early mornings, cleaning the public restrooms, taking out the garbage, and, you know, they've, they've done it with the utmost reliability, the utmost humility, and the utmost dependability. So I'm really glad that tonight we have some certificates to give them, and with that being said, maybe I can invite them-
And let Chris give those certificates.
So if, at this point, if I could have Nick and Chuck maybe come up here?
I know them. Yeah. Nick and Chuck, everybody, here we go. And we'll come around, we'll get a picture with them, holding their awards, we'll be standing in the background, photo bombing, and-
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You have a lot of fans out there, Nick and Charles, if I might refer to you by your first names, because I don't know if I've received quite so many emails, text messages, and phone calls saying, what in the world are you going to do to recognize these guys? They're always there, they've been there forever. I think the Bachi folks just absolutely rely on you, and it's just an honor to be able to give you these awards and for you to receive the recognition of all the hard work. So once again, thank you so much, and thanks to all of the people that promoted this event to make sure that they were honored, because it's really, it's, we can choose people to honor, but when it comes from the community authentically, then we really know that it's something else. So thanks again. So next, we have another really special recognition, and that is of Deputy Justin Clayton and Deputy Carson Schilling, in honor of their receiving the Medal of Valor Award from the California State Sheriff Association. And I would like, if Brandon Cutting, our police chief, would please come forward and do the honors for this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. It is my honor to introduce Deputy, now Detective, Justin Clayton and Deputy Carson Schilling. Deputy Clayton began with the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office in November of 2020 as a lateral hire from the San Francisco Police Department. On October 15th, 2022, Detective Clayton was assigned to the Sheriff's Office Sonoma Valley Substation, where he had been assigned since April of 2021. In September of 2023, Deputy Clayton, after this incident, was selected as a property crimes detective and is working out of the Sheriff's Office as a financial crimes detective today. Deputy Schilling began with the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office in January of 2022 as a lateral hire, also from the San Francisco Police Department. On October 15th, 2022, Deputy Schilling was assigned to the Sonoma Police Department, where he had been assigned since May of 2022 and remains today. On Saturday, October 15th, 2022, at approximately 6:45 PM, deputies were dispatched to a residence in the Boys' Hot Springs area regarding a report of a family disturbance. The reporting party reported her son, Nathan Smart, had been drinking, was under the influence of drugs, and had threatened to kill her. She also stated she believed Nathan Smart had been in possession of homemade firearms. Deputies arrived at the residence a short time later and located Smart in the driveway, who immediately retreated to his residence as deputies surrounded the home and attempted to convince Smart to exit. After a search of the residence, Smart was not located, and it was believed he had fled the area when they were coming around the corner, deputies. At approximately 10:06 the same evening, deputies were dispatched to the CVS Pharmacy located at 201 West Napa Street in Sonoma for multiple reports of glass breaking in the parking lot. One of the reporting parties stated that it was Nathan Smart, Nathan Smart, who had used a large wooden stick to break windows on parked vehicles and storefronts. When deputies arrived on scene, Smart had already left the area, and deputies conducted an area search for him. At about 10:15 PM, deputies were dispatched to 465 West First Street for a report of the bouncer at Steiner's Bar, who reported a subject had thrown a chair at a limousine parked out front. The bouncer also reported the subject had a visible black pistol when he fled the area. Deputies arrived immediately, and Smart was located in the area of 135 West Napa Street, just around the corner from Steiner's. When contacted by deputies, Smart fired at least one shot from his handgun at Deputy Clayton. Deputy Clayton returned fire, and Smart ran around a building corner out of view. Within a few seconds, he emerged from an alley near where Deputy Schilling had taken cover in attempt, in an attempted ambush. Smart pointed his gun at Deputy Schilling, Deputy Schilling fired his service weapon, striking Smart. On scene deputies performed lifesaving measures until EMS arrived and transported Smart to the emergency room with several gunshot wounds. On July 14th, 2023, Nathan Smart was sentenced to 21 years in prison for assault with a firearm on a peace officer. A few weeks ago, the California State Sheriff's Association awarded both deputies with the California Sheriff's Medal of Valor Award in Orange County, an honor that I personally have never witnessed a Sonoma County deputy or any Northern California deputy receiving. Law enforcement began, begins every shift with the expectation that they may have to face and stop true evil. What the deputies of the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office and the Sonoma Police Department faced that October night was nothing short of the worst kind of evil that a peace officer could encounter, a drug-fueled, hate-driven, human with a plan to destroy the essence of humanity by trying to kill the very deputies that stand before all of us right now. The actions of these deputies was nothing short of heroic to themselves, their partners, and all that were present in the plaza area, both visitors and residents, who were simply enjoying a night out at the plaza at restaurants and bars. Despite what could have been a much more tragic night, these two deputies, and all of the deputies of the Sonoma Police Department and the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office, many who are here right now, quite a few out in the lobby, I believe-
Yes.
-always stand ready to serve the community with the understanding that 99% plus of the people that they deal with in the course of serving the peace are great people, and good people, that have made some bad choices. Yet, they also always stand ready to protect the community from the dangers we don't know about until they surface. It is important for me to recognize the other deputies, in addition to these two, that were present directly and involved in the encounter with Nathan Smart when he engaged them with a firearm, but were not involved in the actual shooting itself. There are Deputy Jim Andrews, who was assigned to Sonoma Police Department, Deputy Hector Campos, who was a Canine at the Sheriff's Office, Deputy Cody Macbeth, who was a deputy at the Sheriff's Office, Sergeant Mike Shemel, who was the supervisor of the Sonoma Valley Substation, and Deputy Chris McConnell, McDonnell, of the Sheriff's Office. One of the great things about having the team of deputies from the Police Department and the Sheriff's Office on duty at all times is at a time like this, when a small staff would not have been able to address this kind of terror in the plaza with such safe efficiency. The men and women of the Sonoma Police Department, the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office, myself, and all the deputies here are very appreciative of the recognition by you, the City Council, of the deputies directly involved in this incident, and we thank you. I'd like to-
Yeah, let's get the whole team up here, come on down, come on. Let's, let's get the team, you know who you are. Now, I'm on the riser, and I'm still shorter than all these guys, I'm just saying, all right? Not making it up. All right, anyone else? All right, wonderful. Thank you. Let's get some pictures.
One, two, three. One, two, three. And done.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you so much. I, I don't know if anyone else wants to say something, I'm sure they do, but I had four kids, I get it, trust me. I just want to say how immensely proud we are, Chief Cutting and officers, how immensely proud we are that you're there for us. And I just want to extend my heartfelt thanks to every single one of you who step out there every single day to make sure we have a safe place and love this town as much as we do. We could not do it without you, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much. Anyone else want to say anything? Because these guys are pretty amazing, but up to you. Vice Mayor, please. Would you have fun with your families and enjoy? I'm sure there's Halloween candy to be eaten and celebrations to be had. Thank you so much. Wonderful turnout, fantastic.
Thanks again.
No, thank you, thank you so much. Appreciate all you. Amazing job, we're so lucky. All right, next, we have another presentation and another absolute superstar, which is, our fire chief is here too, oh my goodness. Yeah, 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 no, this is, this is, this is not, this is a presentation. He gets as long as he, he needs, not as long as he likes, as long as he needs. All right, this is a presentation on the Proposed Improved and Enhanced Local Fire Protection, Paramedic Service, and Disaster Response Initiative, and Steve Aker, the fire chief, is here to present for us.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Lo, council, staff, and community. That is an incredibly hard act to follow, just saying. But what an honor to be here tonight as your fire chief, as always, to serve my hometown community and to share with you some really exciting prospects of where we're at with our sales tax initiative for improved and enhanced fire services throughout the county, not just here in Sonoma City and Sonoma Valley, but throughout the county. As we've talked a little bit about during the budget process and some others, you know, this, this is all kind of the culmination of what we all experienced as a community in 2017. We were not as prepared as we could have been, should have been, and thankfully, we didn't lose any lives that night, but your fire service, both here locally and countywide, really took that as a call to action and have improved in many different facets of emergency services, emergency preparedness, response, and one of the things that we did, we felt was absolutely necessary for us, was we needed a funding source to add more firefighters and more capability to our response, to our prevention, that wasn't there now, or wasn't there in 2017. So we, we started with Measure G. Can you go to the next slide? Oh, I've got it, sorry. There we go. Thank you. So we, we launched Measure G in March of 2020. This was put on the ballot by the Board of Supervisors and as such required a two-thirds majority to pass. We failed by a very small margin to reach that two-thirds threshold. You know, obviously broad community support with this, but it, we weren't successful. So we went back to the drawing board, the Fire Service Working Group is a subsection of the Sonoma County Fire Chiefs Association, which I happen to also have the honor, in addition to being the fire chief here, I get to be the president of the County Chiefs Association right now during this process. We were the lead group to work on the original Measure G, and then we've also been the ones to retool. The need didn't go away when Measure G failed, the, the need was still there, and we continue to see even more, a greater need as time goes on, as we transition, we talked a little bit about this during the budget process as well. Fire service is evolving from, in many areas of the county, and even here, from a primarily volunteer-based system to needing to have a career, fully staffed, 24/7, 365 type of service. Still supplemented via volunteers, of course, but primarily, we need that career staffing. So when we, we went back to the drawing board and we didn't just repackage Measure G and say, okay, let's try it again, that, that didn't seem like a smart endeavor, so we looked at different options, and what we landed on was a petition-based drive, which was, as many of you know, that, that requires a lot more effort and funding on the front end of the measure to get it qualified for the ballot. The big benefit of that is if, if we were successful in that fundraising and those efforts to get that, the amount of signatures required for the ballot, we only needed a 50% plus one to pass the tax. And so that's what we did, we have, there, we focused on getting the signatures that we needed, we have now gotten to a point where signatures have been collected, verified, approved by the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors, at their last meeting in September, voted to place this measure on the March 5th ballot in 2024. So while it does not have a measure letter yet, it will be on the ballot in March of '24. So huge success, we raised a lot of money collaboratively with the unions, with the volunteer associations, and community donations to be able to fund the signature gathering campaign, and very happy to report that we, there is a different arm than the County Fire Chiefs Association that has set up a campaign committee and are actively working to put forward a, a successful and strong campaign for this measure. Couple of key highlights, and I think I just kind of mentioned it, but you know, when we, we missed the first time, we, we really, as the Fire Service Working Group, we, we went back to the drawing board, and not only in the design of the measure, but how we could make it be successful, and one of the things that we really focused on was relationships. As the fire service, we knew we had some work to do to get in really strong, united alignment with our labor partners, our volunteers, our elected officials, our city officials. We just, we didn't have quite enough time, I think, for the most part, when Measure G went in 2020, but we really redoubled efforts, and I think it's really shown a lot of, a lot of positive outcomes with that in the position that we are right now. We are very united with, with all of our stakeholders, all of our community and other presentations that we've done to various cities, various community groups. There isn't the hesitation or the questions that there was the last go-around, and I think that's in large part because we've done a better job and had more time to educate and inform, and really share what the importance of this measure is. So, again, I'll go over this briefly, this one is not connected at all with the county of Sonoma. In our polling, we relied very heavily on our polling, one of the things that was a little bit surprising to us in some ways, at least the depth of it, not, not the, on the surface, was, you know, there's a lot of distrust within, within voters of the county. And so we, yes, so we, we found a way to, to take that away. That was one of the big threats to this measure was, you know, and what didn't poll well with voters. So we, we started this through the County Fire Chiefs Association, and as one of the things that came out really strongly in the polling was that the voters really trusted their local firefighters and fire chiefs to tell them what they needed, and they supported that. And so we, we tried to craft this, you know, to take advantage of that. So we also reviewed change of allocations, we based this on a standards of cover program which looks at national fire protection associations, standards for response times and deployments. This was done in partnership with the International Association of Firefighters. That was our data, and then what we did was we brought in every single fire agency within the county to the working group, along with their labor representative and an elected representative of their district or city, and we heard from them. Okay, you're the subject matter experts in your own area, what is it that you need? This is what we've come up with through data and programming, and so the, the combination of those two really developed the distribution plan. Our emphasis, you know, even as surprising as this is, you know, we've projected through the county's projections that a sales tax measure now would bring in $60 million conservatively annually. When we went to gather all the needs, there's more needs than that even, and so we had to kind of pare down a little bit, because going for more than a half cent sales tax was just not, not in the realm of possibilities. So we focused on adding local firefighters and paramedics, building new fire stations, and vegetation management, were our three kind of core services that we, we felt we were able to adequately address through this measure. So I'm not going to read this, I basically just explain that, but we're waiting on the, on the county elections, we should get this in early December to have the, the measure letter. Um, we are starting, um, we have begun to educate and inform our communities, um, prior to the campaign and the advocacy part of this. Um, there's a lot of information on the, um, on the Sonoma County Fire Chief's, uh, website, and we will be pushing this out through the fire district as well. Um, a- and having information sheets at, at each of our fire stations and, and other, uh, community events to just start informing the community about what's coming up. A couple other elements, um, I think I went through some of this already, but there is, uh, we improved the governance model. So, um, the distribution percentages will be set by law, um, so those are, those are not easily changeable. Um, but we do have a, we established an 11-member, um, independent oversight committee, and that's going to be made up of representatives from the Board of Supervisors, uh, cities, labor, fire districts, uh, fire chiefs, and, um, members at large from the community, as well as the taxpayers association. So, uh, tried to get that very broad base to take a look at, you know, how we're spending money. And each of the agencies will be required to submit an annual report on, uh, what revenues they received and how they were spending them, and how, you know, they needed to be, need to be in alignment with, um, the priorities. Partnership and coordination, so I talked a little bit about this already, um, with the firefighters' unions, the volunteer firefighters, uh, our vegetation management community. Um, they are such, they're such an asset throughout the county with, um, led by Fire Safe Sonoma, and that's one of the key initiatives of this, um, this measure is we will, we will fund a regional vegetation management coordinator for each of the seven regions within the county. We will also fund an, an executive director for the first time with Fire Safe Sonoma. So, Fire Safe Sonoma net, right now operates with a volunteer executive director. So, we will provide funding to them to, um, to be able to be that umbrella agency with full-time staff to coordinate veg management. And then we've also done a lot of, um, outreach, as I mentioned before, with, uh, different, um, cities, districts, um, community groups, and, and whatnot. All right, so here's, here's kind of where the rubber meets the road for us here locally. So, the heading is the Sonoma Valley Fire District-specific, um, understanding, and, and we heard a little bit about this from Chief Cutting just recently, uh, in his previous remarks about the value of being a regional service and, and how when there's a time of need, we can draw from, from each other here locally and provide a better service to our community. And that's, that's really what, what we do as well, um, in both fire and EMS. So, I'm going to start with the benefits directly to the city of Sonoma, and then go into some of the indirect benefits that are for our system here, which absolutely affect, uh, the city of Sonoma and our residents here, both in the city as well as the unincorporated areas. So, the first and biggest, uh, priority and opportunity with the funding is, um, you know, again, so appreciate the council and managers', uh, faith in, um, staffing the three firefighter/paramedic positions on the city's engine company this year, um, with the anticipation of this. Um, those fun, those positions will be funded permanently with the passage of this measure. Um, we will also realize, we, being the city's fire budget, will realize, um, an influx of about 170,000 annually in dispatch fees. Um, that's another key component of this measure is that all dispatch fees, uh, for both cities and fire districts will be covered, as well as improving our dispatch center from not just a dispatch center, but to an emergency command center level of operations, which we don't currently have. Um, another key benefit that I'll talk about a little bit more in detail on the next slide is, uh, this will add another ambulance to our system. Um, and as, as we know that, um, the city is responsible for, through, through our contract, we are the service provider, but the city owns the ambulance company and the rights to that, and the city receives all of the benefits, uh, all of the transport revenues, um, through our ambulance service. Um, we will also add a new engine company within our valley system, and in total, we'll bring on 17 new firefighter/paramedics within our valley system. Uh, we will also have two, uh, aging fire stations, uh, have the opportunity to be rebuilt, one over 50 years old and one over 100 years old. So, um, yeah, some pretty, pretty substantial improvements, pretty necessary, maybe, maybe even long overdue improvements that, uh, that we need to have. It, there's a lot to be said for history, but operating out of a facility that old is, uh, is a little bit challenging, to say the least. Um, a couple of other county benefits that, uh, that are built into this is, um, I know I've shared with, with you before about when we're in red flag or storm conditions, that we end up, um, we end up up-staffing and adding additional resources for response, whether it's wildfire or storm response. And, um, that was something that the county had funded for a couple of years, based on one-time funding. Uh, they've stopped doing that. They, they're no longer able to. So, this measure will provide that bucket of funds, um, to, again, to provide that up-staffing here on a local level. Uh, training and technology enhancement, and I already talked about the veg management projects. All right, next one. So, um, the Sonoma Valley here, the ambulance service has had two paramedic ambulances, um, since about 1980. And we still have two paramedic ambulances. So, our calls for service have grown, uh, doubled, tripled, uh, probably quadrupled in that time. Uh, it's a little bit hard to go back to that time and, and get some accurate data, but, um, it, it's the same level of service, but we're, our demands for service have continued to increase. So, last year, we resp- we transported 2,700 patients to Sonoma Valley Hospital. That's 77% of our transports. Um, the partnership with, between the ambulance service, uh, with the city's support, the hospital's support, and being operated by us, um, is tremendous for our community. Because what it allows us to do is with those short resp- response times, it allows ambulances to get back in service much quicker than if they were to transport to Queen of the Valley or Memorial or Marin General or other places. So, having this ER in this hospital, um, i- is really critical to the whole system. And, and we're really, really happy and excited that, um, the emergency department at Sonoma Valley has a new, uh, provider, and they are the emergency, uh, physicians group that provides the service at Queen of the Valley, which is a trauma center. So, we're bringing that level of service to our community, which is, which is just tremendous. Um, so, he- here's what, here's a couple of things that are a little bit, uh, that, you know, startling maybe, but, uh, but they'll be addressed through this measure is, um, almost every day, or at least two out of three days, 257 times last year, we had to up-staff an additional ambulance. When we do that, we take an engine company out of service. That puts our fire response capability behind the curve, and that puts us at risk. And, and we, we manage it as best we can. We rely on volunteers to come back, but it, it's not a comfortable position to be in. Um, we're not overstaffed at all on the fire side of things, and to take a resource out of service is, uh, concerning. So, with this measure, adding a third ambulance, um, we're gonna, we're gonna drastically reduce that number of times that an engine is taken out of service for that. And I already mentioned about, uh, the city receiving all of the transport funds last year, including federal reimbursements. It was to the tune of about $2.8 million. Um, this year with the new, um, PPGMT, which was a, a combination of, um, the California Fire Chiefs Association and the California Professional Firefighters, um, our revenues are tracking well above that, um, so far this year. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Questions for Chief Aker? Well, I'm sure you will not. I'm looking this way first. Patricia has her line on. We'll get to you.
I want to thank you for all the great work around this. This is really, you know, an amazing strategy and being able to take, uh, a defeat and turn it into something that could very well potentially be a great success. And then I have one question, which I sure will not surprise you, is do you think that, I realize that for the engines, uh, that it's difficult to have those as EV at this point yet because of the duties that they have to have and where they have to transport, but is it possible that it could be an EV ambulance?
That is a good question. I have not seen EV ambulances yet. Um, I'm not sure if I shared this with the council before, but, um, we actually did have an EV engine, uh, that we demonstrated, uh, a couple of months ago at Fire Station One here in the city. Um, it was, it was a remarkable engine. Um, you know, the, the quietness, the performance, uh, the size was a little bit reduced. Um, all real pluses, um, e- except for the price tag. Um, it was considerably more than a standard engine, but, um, I, I think, you know, w- we as a district are certainly looking at any and all opportunities. Um, with the council's support, we just, uh, were able to buy a hybrid, um, SUV for our, uh, fire marshal. So, we continue to look at opportunities, um, and we're going to come back with, um, with a, you know, we, we're on a three-year replacement cycle for ambulances, so it, it's, you know, they get, they get worn more than the engines do, and, uh, their replacement cycle is much quicker. So, we, we'll continue to look for opportunities that we might be able to do that.
And I will just say that, you know, you, Sonoma Clean Power does a number of matching, uh, opportunities, so there may, that could be helpful in the future as well, too.
And so, on, on that note of just the sustainability, if I can go just a, a step beyond that, we've worked, uh, thank you to Travis for, um, his connections. Um, we have, uh, installed solar on our Aguacaliente station. Uh, we have installed heat pumps at a couple of our stations, um, to provide more energy efficiency. And once our seismic retrofit is completed at Station Five in Glen Ellen, they will, uh, we will also install solar there. So, we are actively looking at opportunities. We, honestly, we're even having the conversation and seeing what we can do, modeling after what the city did at the community center of seeing if we could do EV charging stations at our fire stations. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dean?
Thank you, Steve. And the, I do have experience for the measure, and you just, uh, only in the 1.83, uh, percent and, uh, to reach the threshold. I think it's easy enough for you to come over this time, and then March 24th, right? Uh, the best way is to gather the more education and for our own the community. And, uh, just like in the today, your presentation could be spread over to our own the community. And then letting the people, uh, understand and share common grounds with you. And the, also, I pretty much for sure firefighters and you, and really deeply and involved on the local community, they, you deserved to got a lot of the support for this and measure. And the, I would like to say then a thank you, and on behalf of sister cities, because they in the request retired and used in the fire in the engine to support in Ukraine, our sister cities. And you, not only as our Sonoma Valley Fire and the department, also you spread the words to the own the counties, and we are very appreciate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Wellander?
Surprise.
Um, the slides were going pretty quick. Did I see accurately that the percentage that Sonoma Valley Fire District's getting is 6.38?
Yeah, 6.38, and that includes the percentage for the city. But, but the, if I can, the percentage, that's broken out, so the percentage, the, it's like 1.18 goes directly to the city, and the other 5% goes to the fire district. So, the fire district is not receiving all of those funds directly. They are broken out into two, um, buckets, so to speak.
With the proposed, uh, improvements or adds, what's the timeline on that to achieve what you just described?
Well, um, thanks to the council's faith and trust in, um, in, in part of these measures, um, we, we're already ahead of the curve in terms of the three firefighter/paramedics for the minimum staffing here in the city, which brings us up to that three-person engine company that's our standard. Um, so that's just going to continue, but it, what it's going to do is provide budget relief for the city, um, in the, in the coming years. Um, the rest of them, it's, uh, a great question. The revenue doesn't actually, won't, won't actually be received by any of the entities until early 2025. So, what the fire district, uh, did just this last, um, meeting in October, was the fire district board agreed to, um, dip into some of our reserves to try to get ahead of the hiring curve. As you can imagine, um, you know, even just right now, there's, there's a lot of pressure on hiring. It's not the same as it was, you know, 10, 20 years ago with applicants for, you know, public safety jobs. They're, they're just not, they're not there like they used to be. And for us to get over what just is the normal pressure and then hire an additional 200 within this county, that's a big lift. So, it, it's potentially going to take some time. Uh, we as a fire district have taken a lot of steps to try to get ahead of that. So, it, it's going to be incremental, for sure, um, but we've, uh, we've got authorization to hire three. We just put out another, um, open recruitment for entry-level firefighter/paramedics and laterals. So, we're, we're hoping to get a good crop, and if we get, we get good fits, because that's what it's all about. It's not just putting, you know, a body in a seat. If we get good fits, then there's the opportunity to have further discussions with the fire board on how we might, um, continue to be ahead of the curve.
Okay. As we strengthen our ambulance section, I know that we are currently in a lawsuit with a private vendor. Are we gonna, are we positioning ourselves to be stronger, to fight off these, uh, unwelcome lawsuits and put us in a better position, or are we continually going to be vulnerable? Maybe our legal counsel can at least give us an update or not on what's happening?
I, I would kind of say we could maybe tag-team this one. So, from, I, I don't want to get into the legal side of it, but I know, uh, politically and operationally, uh, or, yeah, administratively and politically, um, we are very, very active in trying to ensure every opportunity we can to avoid that kind of pressure and vulnerability to private ambulance companies. Um, we see this locally, we see it statewide. There is a, there is a big, uh, fight between private ambulance companies and public providers. Um, here in Sonoma County, we were in a, we're at the forefront, very honestly. Um, Sonoma County Fire District was awarded the ambulance service contract for EOA One, which is Roanoke Park, Santa Rosa, most of Windsor, that core area of the 101. Um, that's the first time that's ever happened. It's always been a private ambulance provider. And so, when some of these things happen, it also happened just recently in Santa Barbara County and others. Um, when those kind of, um, changes occur, that's where we see a lot of these, uh, in my opinion, that's where we see a lot of these lawsuits coming out because they're trying to protect what they, what business they had. Um, we're also dealing with, uh, right now, we're, um, submitting, the county has to submit an EMS plan. And so, we're actively engaged in that. We were actively engaged in the new EMS ordinance that we put forward. And in every one of those opportunities, we fight really, really hard to ensure our 201 rights, which is our exclusivity here, which prevents an ambulance company from just plopping an ambulance in at the plaza and saying, well, we're the closest unit now. We're gonna, we're gonna take these calls and the associated revenue. Um, which actually happened in the city in 19, in the early 1990s. And the city and the fire districts surrounding the city went to court in 1993 and got a, a judgment against the county and the state to secure our exclusivity. So, at every chance we get, and, um, city attorney Ruderman has been incredibly helpful, and, uh, Jeff Walters before, um, and working in partnership to ensure that we, we have the best legal strategy and, and best approach to those situations. And with that, I'd turn it over to you, David, if there.
I've heard enough, so you can.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think that there's any effect, this measure's not going to affect in any way. This measure is not gonna affect in any way the lawsuit or the status of the lawsuit. It's.
I'm just saying that we're making an investment into a, a stronger ambulance service that I absolutely support a hundred percent, but I don't like these rogue lawsuits. Sorry, I just don't like them being brought up.
Yeah, and for clarification, we are, the city is named amongst many others as simply a real party in interest. So we're not the defendant in the lawsuit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, questions for Mr. Aker? No, thank you. Okay, I've, I've, so the hundred-year-old firehouse is?
That's in Eldridge.
Eldridge. I knew it was Eldridge. And it's, it's absolutely beautiful. I know, I'm sure it doesn't work very well, but it's, it's so charming. And if you haven't been out there to see, it's, it's just absolutely beautiful. I think how, someone told me a statistic once about it. The oldest one, I don't know, west of the Mississippi or something like that. Do you know?
I, I've heard some of those as well. I can't, I, I can't corroborate that. I, I actually doubt that when you look at some of our older cities. You know, San Francisco, Los Angeles, even, even some of the old cities in, in like the Sierra foothills with the Gold Rush and stuff there. I, I believe there's older fire stations that exist. When you get to the point of continually operating out of, I, I don't, I can't.
Well, we should all look at it. It's, it's really quite special in terms of.
It is, and you know, it, it's, as much as I love history and I truly do, you know, if there was a way to preserve that, that would be my first choice, for sure. But that's, a lot of that is out of my control.
Right. It would be nice to sort of preserve it historically and then have a functioning firehouse somewhere nearby. And it could be a nice museum, yes, for all the firefighting that goes on. And what a great use of it at the Sonoma Developmental Center. I bet people would actually support that if it were in the plan. So you never know. Anyway, thank you for your presentation, very complete. And I, I would just like to get a sense from the, the council, if we could do more. Are you, could we take a resolution and support? What, what more could we do possibly that might further send a signal? Even though I made a joke about the, you know, the county, I mean, they regard us the same. Nobody likes politicians. And by the way, you guys, we all are politicians by nature of this office. So we're not as popular as Steve, but you know, that's, goes without saying. But if we could help, would it help if the, if the council did a resolution and support? Or what, what could we do?
We're, we're working on that. Thank you for that, first and foremost. Thank you. I really appreciate that. We all do, that are working in, in support of this measure. We just had a conversation with the campaign committee today and we're exploring whether, I mean, certainly individual endorsements. And we're, we're trying to figure out whether we come back to elected bodies and do an endorsement from elected bodies as well.
Okay.
So if we could, through David, I'll continue to.
Sure. I mean, I, I heard good things coming from the council and I'm sure everybody would like to do something to support if, if, if it's helpful. If it's not helpful and they say, no, having you guys on there, that's not gonna help at all. I mean, you know, then we'll be quiet.
My sense is having you as individuals endorsing and the name recognition that that brings is the primary focus of the campaign committee. And I will certainly be in touch with David about any further asks from the campaign.
That's great. Well, go out and win this thing. We, it's, you're doing great work and we're so lucky. And it was just an evening of being able to thank people for all the hard work that they do. And it's so essential, whether it's the, the guys that take care of the Depot Park and these brave police officers that we have and these brave firefighters that we have. We're so lucky. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time and the opportunity.
Thank you. Right. So we kind of went off our traditional schedule. So let's, let's roll it back to council members' reports and comments, okay? And then we'll, we'll go, after that and all those things, we'll do the consent calendar. If, if that's, does that make sense to everybody? Everyone at that table is nodding their head. I haven't lost my mind. That's good. All right, so let's start with Mr. Ding. Any, anything to share?
Thank you, Mayor Lo. I would like to report my attendance to the meeting of the Zero Waste Sonoma, that is Sonoma County Waste Management Agency. It was on October the nineteenth. We started the closed section at eight-thirty, that is in, in Santa Rosa, and the city in a chamber. During the closed section, we just the review, the purchasing contract to acquire a three-point-five acre and a property in Windsor and for additional facility for the county, the waste management agency use for the long-term and the strategy. And overall, we all agree to, you know, move forward. So the, we agreed to pass the intent of the zero waste and the Sonoma to purchase and the real property. And the next time, the next of the community, the time, that is November sixteen, this two weeks later, we will officially approve this agreement to purchase this property. Unfortunately, we couldn't got a chance to have a site visit. But some of the, of the, the committee and the member were in the visitor over there by individual. And during the regular, and the meeting, the time, as we review, we review the present, we passed our own the service provider consulting and the business that is so-called Cascadia Consulting Group to help us to become compliant for the state SB thirteen eighty-three requirements and disposable the food of waste ordinance in the Sonoma County. Also, we approve it unanimously. And the following of that, we got some in a presentation from the staff for the new development for our county's western management. For example, the central and the land of your improvements for the year of the two thousand and twenty-two and the transfer station improvements two thousand and twenty-two. And also, we look at it in the future development. And because in the right now, we just only have fifteen to nineteen years remaining life to, for those, and the wastes, solid and the waste. If we have a natural disaster, it would be, you know, shorter of this remaining life. So we need to prepare some measurement and in advance. For example, in the last, in the last two thousand and seventeen, and fire wider fires and shorten our remaining life for solid waste by the two and a half years. So nobody knows in the, in the future, we have possible another than a wide file or earthquake. So this is really, really an issue. Everything is under the consideration. I will give us a report updated in timely manner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much for your report. Ms. Rarivus.
Yes, thank you very much, Councilwoman Ding, for that report. Very interesting. So I have three I'm gonna try to do very quickly. So there was a meeting of the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission on October twenty-fifth, which is a commission for focused on land use and other long-term visions of Sonoma between the county, how that collaborates between the county and the city of Sonoma. So we had a presentation from SCTA, which is the Sonoma County Transportation Authority. And they presented their act, active transportation plan. And that, the focus of that plan will be on Sonoma, unincorporated Sonoma County, Cloverdale, Katati, Hillsburg, Roanoke Park, Sebastopol. And that is to create a community-informed active transportation plan. And that is, there is a, a site, sonomacity dot, on our site too, and sonomacity.org slash Sonoma hyphen county hyphen active hyphen transportation hyphen plan hyphen. Have your say. There's hyphens between all those words. I don't have to say every hyphen. Google it. It's the easiest thing to do it. And you can comment on where, by going in there. You can comment on where you think there needs to be improvements for walking, for cycling, and for accessibility. So encourage people to do that. And then I attended a meeting of the, oh, they also presented the Sonoma County Travel Behavior Study. You can also Google that. I can read that to you, but you can Google that and go to Sonoma County Travel Behavior Study. Two quick, interesting points. Eighty-nine percent of the trip, the trips that they calculated in looking at where, you know, trips that, that happened within Sonoma County, eighty-nine percent of the, the vehicle miles traveled were inside Sonoma County. In Sonoma County, sixty percent of those trips were under five miles. And in the city of Sonoma, eighty percent of the trips in the city of Sonoma are under five miles. So that's a good match with what they're doing in regards to this active transportation plan of how do we get more of these shorter trips happening with people walking and bicycle and maybe circulators? Who knows? And then I also attended, on behest of the mayor, on, on Halloween. I did both of these ones on Halloween. I did not dress for them, but I was there for Halloween. I attended the climate mayor's general meeting, and which is a national meeting of mayors across the country. There was a presentation by Maggie Thompson, Thomas, who is the Chief of Staff of the White House Office of Domestic Climate Policy, and she announced the American Climate Corps. And so it's good for us to be looking at the climate corps similar to AmeriCorps or the Conservation Corps to see what are, what are potential projects that we, city of Sonoma or Sonoma Valley could utilize and utilize these American Climate Corps. And the focus is to provide the technical training for young people to become proficient in the world of climate solutions. There was also a presentation of Crosswalk, which is an emissions portal, which is very interesting, that adds, provides actually more recent data where every city, you can actually go in and look by block, if you want to, and see what the carbon emissions are, greenhouse gas emissions are, and track the changes. So it could be a really interesting tool for us. Last but not least, on, I attended the Local Aging and Disability Action Plan kickoff meeting. I attended that because I was also invited by the, it's LADAP, L-A-D-A-P. I guess it's L-A-D-A-P, LADAP. I guess you can, anyway, I hate acronyms, but I'll call it LADAP. Is, I don't really hate them. I just have problems with them. So they had, they had their kickoff meeting. And so what the kickoff meeting is, is basically, is they're looking is to develop a plan for specifically Santa Rosa and the valley of Sonoma Valley and looking at how they can actually provide better capabilities for, for people that are aging and disabilities. And the main reason I wanted to bring this up tonight is that there will be an advisory committee. And so I think it'd be good for us to look at someone from the city of Sonoma to potentially participate in that advisory committee. But committee members would be asked, the project's gonna go through March of two thousand and twenty-five, and they'd probably be asked to participate in at least fifteen minutes, fifteen meetings. And the last thing I want to announce, which I'm very happy to announce, sorry this is so long, is that I would like to appoint Michaelia Randolph to the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission. She was previously a member of the commission for eleven years. I met with her personally last week and since then have received numerous, numerous recommendations on her behalf.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And as usual, you do your due diligence and thank you for attending all those meetings, especially the climate mayors. I ran into Mayor Kate Gallego, who's the mayor of Phoenix, at an event that I was at. And she said, Sandra, you have to get involved with the climate mayors. And I'm like, yeah. I'm like, when am I gonna do that? And so I asked Patricia if she wouldn't mind, because she has such a vast knowledge of environmental issues and so forth, and so she was kind enough to, to do that. But I know that they are really a top-notch organization. And thank you for bringing all that back to Sonoma, and I appreciate that. Okay. We'll go this way. Vice Mayor, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
All right. Mr. Wellender.
Yes, I've had the opportunity to represent Sonoma on a number of occasions. Let me start with a fun one. Went on a field trip to Mare Island and saw a very large factory that makes prefabricated boxes. And I had my fellow councilwoman attend, Ms. Rivas, as well as our city manager. And it was incredibly interesting about the production and speed and efficiency. And it was encouraging. It's predominantly for projects that have probably at least forty units. These are kind of like stackable boxes, but they are very efficient. You end up putting on your own individual outside skins, so you can personalize it a little bit. They've been doing a number of projects in the, in the Bay Area, San Francisco and Oakland and elsewhere. May have an application for us, but as long as we keep our kind of small-scale nature and don't go too higher than three-story, there may be an opportunity. So that was encouraging and also fun. The next sort of fun one was I went to a CLC, again, meeting, board meeting. And my takeaway on that, again, is that the, it's complicated topic, very integrated with a lot of both bureaucrats and politicians and the service providers. And I think the main emphasis right now is we're trying to pool and coordinate our efforts because we're small, but we're part of it. And we need to kind of slip into the system and make sure that we can participate and in turn get some benefits from participating. Had a chance to go to the groundwater sustainability agency. The good news is that we recently received a three-point-one million grant. The bad news, it sounds like they're gonna spend it all on studies, which never makes me happy. But it was something to celebrate. We actually, between Santa Rosa and Petaluma and Sonoma Valley, the three basins, we received fifteen million dollars worth of state grants from the Department of Water Resources. So that was encouraging. Couple of comments from the meeting. There's some discussion about the value of possibly combining all three basin districts instead of having three individual ones, Petaluma, Santa Rosa and Sonoma Valley. There could be some staffing efficiencies, but that's down the road. And probably the other takeaway is that we still are, you know, preaching conservation and we need to replenish our basin. There's just not a real effective way to identify whether or not we're making any progress because basins fill up slowly, but nonetheless. And I'll save the other one for possibly the mayor.
Give me a hint.
We sat in the room here, had some good pastures.
I do have that one. I just wanted to make sure it was like, is there something else I'm missing? Oh, okay. All right. I was actually checking my calendar going like, did they not go to that meeting? I should have sworn they were there. All right. The meeting they're talking about is in this very room on the twentieth of October. We had all of the mayors and council members who wanted to come there. It's actually an appointee group of mayors and council members for this legislative committee. But we opened it up because our, our very own assembly member, Cecilia Aguirre Curry, was the guest speaker. And, you know, I, I know that there's, we, we've been sort of chiding each other about government and so forth, but she's a champion for us. She really is. And she's a champion for small towns and she's carrying, she carried it and it's passed. And, um, she's carrying, um, she carried it, and it's passed and on the ballot, um, legislation that would help in the situation that Steve Aker just described, where they lost by, you know, less than, uh, two percent on something so vital. Um, she's carrying legislation to, um, make those bonds and parcel taxes to, uh, fifty-five percent. And it will be on the ballot in November. And, you know, the California Professional Firefighters are the, um, sponsors of that bill. So it was interesting to, to hear what she had to say. And, um, just the other day, her staff person sent me a picture of her on the Ada Limone bench, cause I asked her if she would please take a picture before she left, and I'll, I'll share that. And, um, it was, it was, it was just lovely to be able to, to have her here. And then, um, the same group will be meeting, and I'll report on how it goes, with Senator McGuire, um, coming up, uh, this, later this month, um, next week, actually. Um, we are so lucky in the county of Sonoma that we have the incoming Pro Tem of the State Senate, Mike McGuire, in the county of Sonoma, and the Pro Tem of the State Assembly, Cecilia Aguirre Curry in Sonoma. In fact, she is our Assembly Member. Mike is not, but, um, he's close by, and I have his phone number in case we need it. It, it is absolutely historic, very historic. So, um, some other things. I also had, um, something very fun I wanna share is that I was invited, um, by the, uh, Sherpa, um, Club to their award ceremony for, um, their members who climbed to the tallest, most dangerous mountain in the world, uh, four siblings who raised the California State Flag on the top of Mount Everest. Take a look. And they wanted me to have this, and I told them, I said, if I have this and it's in my house, only I will ever see it, except for the occasional people to come visit me. And it really belongs somewhere where everyone can see it. And so, um, I'll hand this over, and we'll find some special place of honor. But it was, um, you know, I, when I got the invitation and I saw it, and I even asked David, I said, God, it's long. It's like five hours, you know? And, but when I went there, they, it was really phenomenal. They started off with, they had a Buddhist monk there who, uh, who did, um, chanting a beautiful ceremony where, I mean, I, I won't do it justice, and I, I was very new to it, but I was very impressed with it. You, um, throwing of rice happened, and, um, everybody participated. It was lovely. They had some, um, dances from their area. They, the way they honor people is they put silk scarfs around them, long silk scarfs. And I, they put long silk scarfs around me. I was really moved by that because I was like, I don't know if I deserve this. Thank you so much. You know, I was really taken aback by, by the honor. Um, then they showed a film, and then they had speakers. Um, it, it, and they had food, and, and it, it was just absolutely, I learned so much about their culture. And they're trying to build a center here in Sonoma, a community center for Sherpa families. And so that the kids, on like the weekends, can come there and learn their dances and learn their language and all of that. And, um, it, and there was Sherpa from all over the Bay Area that came there. About, there were over a hundred people there and kids, and it, it was just, it was delightful. And I enjoyed every single minute of it, and I, I really learned a lot, was very impressed. And I, I told them that, you know, they have to get involved in the city, so we're, have to find something, how to bring them in. So I'd like to invite them to one of the meetings and, um, let them tell the story because it's, it's quite remarkable. Um, today, I was at the LAFCO meeting, and it's gonna be a doubleheader for me in terms of learning everything about Anderson Valley. So I learned a lot about Anderson Valley water and lack thereof. And, um, I think we'll probably learn some more about it later tonight. Um, but that was very, very interesting. Um, we also, you know, received sort of the plan for, you know, what will, they'll be looking at, uh, in the next couple of months and so forth. It's absolutely fascinating committee to, to work on because they really tackle a lot of things that are, um, they're so, they're at the very core of what we do, which is, is, should this be a district? Does this belong together? How should it be funded? What should these people be doing? There was a lot of, that had to do with fire. Um, Steve isn't here now, but, uh, lot to do with the combination of fire districts, which happened. A lot of it had to do financial, and a lot of it is service delivery. Anyway, that's what I have to report. And, um, thank you all for all the things that you guys do. It's, it's amazing. You've got an amazing group of people here who work very hard. Um, next up is the consent calendar. Um, all items on the consent calendar consider to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion unless somebody decides they would like something pulled.
Mayor, I apologize. Sorry to interrupt. Um, quick updates, uh, from city manager, maybe.
Please.
Attorney.
Oh, did I skip you? You know, we're going so out of order that, um, I didn't move you to the end. Like every, I'm so sorry. My deep apologies. Please go on.
Not a problem. Just wanna give a couple of quick updates for the council and for the public watching. Uh, we do have a new A D, A E D on the plaza. It's been installed and activated. Um, so I wanna thank the Public Works crews and our fire department for getting that up and going. There will be one more, um, installed, so there'll be two on the plaza, um, shortly. Um, also, we have our general plan workshop tomorrow. It's our first one, November second. Uh, it's from six to eight P M. at the Vintage House. And then the second one will be on November thirteenth. And if you can't make either of those, we will be out in the community going to other groups and other places, um, around town to get feedback. So, um, stay tuned. Um, visit the website for more information. Uh, we also have a, uh, cleanup day on Saturday for the Veterans Cemetery. So we've been through all three cemeteries over the past few months. Uh, I wanna thank the community for showing up and volunteering and being part of the solution to help us get our cemeteries back in order. Uh, the Veterans Cemetery, um, has community workdays on this Saturday from nine A M. to noon, if you wanna come out for that. And then, um, finally, uh, we, the Chase Street Bridge Project reached a major milestone, um, this week. Actually, today, the Public Works Director's giving an update. Uh, they're out of the creek, which is really important. So that basically means all the forums and everything that are out of the creek and prior to the rains coming. We do have some forecasted rains coming down the road, so we wanna make sure we, they hit that milestone, and they did. Um, so thank you to Mike.
The rains and the fish.
And the fish. Yes. We wanna thank the crews for, uh, moving forward quickly and getting that done. They still have months of work to do, um, on the top, um, so it's not complete. But the, the major, um, getting out of the creek was the key. So, um, thanks to everybody involved in that, and that's all I have.
Well, you forgot to mention that the blinking stop signs.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Two, yeah, we have two, two other updates. I apologize. We did install some additional blinking stop signs, and we're working on installing more of those around town. Um, the latest one was, um, is it Andrew, Andruks? I always hit, Andrew, Andruks? I'm showing my, uh, my newness.
We can say Andruks. Us Westsiders say Andruks. The more it goes east. It actually, eventually it's Andrew, and then it turns into France, and then whatever.
So, so we'll keep an eye on that and see how the public reacts to that. Hopefully, we can get more of those, and we'd love any feedback. Um, and thank you to, to the Public Works crew for getting that done as well. And then one other final update. Um, all the posters you see in the room here, the Vintage Festival posters. And we are gonna have our poster open house, um, to, um, welcome the community in to see these posters. Um, it's next Tuesday, the seventh, at four P M.
Wonderful. And we're going to solicit a, a, an availability for people to help us, um, get them framed and stored, I should hope, too. Yes. Because these were never, I mean, it's, this is the first time they've ever been shown. And, but we need to really keep them, and they need to be framed. And, um, then they can be used. Yeah. People have really enjoyed it. Thank you. Thank you for that. Wonderful. Okay. And the blinking stop signs, I have to tell you, so great. I really, you really notice them. Still need a little tree trimming around there. I may sneak out on my own and kinda deputize myself as the Public Works Department. Vice Mayor is going, don't do that. Don't do that. I won't do that. But I can take a picture and show you where it needs to be. All right. Um, may we move on? Is there anything else? I know we took a lot of things out of order, so apologies for my, am I doing that? Okay, consent calendar. Um, it. And the city attorney. Did you have something?
I don't, I do not have any reports this evening. Thank you.
See, I, I asked the city manager anything else, and he looked right at you and said, absolutely not. So there you go. Thank, thank you for being here. We appreciate you. Um, anybody wanna pull something from the consent calendar? I don't see any pulls. Uh, let's take public comment on the consent calendar. Any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay.
We have Darnell.
Okay, Darnell. Mind people that if you say things that are disruptive to the meeting, we're just gonna hang up on you. Um, right. Any, anyone else?
No further comments.
All right. Very good. Um, so seeing no other comments, no pulls, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move.
I move.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Is that a second, John?
Second.
And there's a second? All right. Any questions on that? No? We'll call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Gurney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Councilmember Farah Rivas?
Aye.
Mayor Lo?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Um, moving on, we're now at section eight. We have public hearing. We have no public hearings. We are at the regular calendar. And I will turn this over to the city manager for presentation on the update of Pacific Gas and Electric Company's Potter Valley Project and support for inclusion of proposal in the draft license surrender application for the Potter Valley Project. Mr. Guin?
Thank you. And I'll turn this over to, to our Public Works Director to introduce Pam. And I do wanna acknowledge and thank Pam for, Pam Jean for coming over to Sonoma to give this presentation.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for your patience for that meeting.
Thank you for hearing this item tonight. City Council, welcome, hi again, Mayor Lo, and council members. Uh, this evening, staff from Sonoma Water will provide an update on the planned license surrender and decommissioning of the Pacific Gas and Electric Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project, as well as the recent proposal to P G N E from the Mendocino County Inland Water and Power Commission, the Round Valley Indian Tribes, and the Sonoma County Water Agency that would advance a regional solution for preserving flows in the Russian River and improving the Eel River fisheries. Um, just a little bit of history with what staff has been working on on this issue for relatively the last year, year and a half. Myself and City Attorney Rutterman have been attending meetings either directly involving Potter Valley or involving the Sonoma Water Agency, where we purchase our water, and Potter Valley has always come up. Well, within the last four months, it seems like the, um, topic has been discussed a lot more, and it's become a lot more relevant because there's some deadlines that are actually coming into play. And most of the updates that I've attended have been done by Pam Jean, who's here tonight from Sonoma County Water Agency. And she, for every update that she brings, she brings a very knowledgeable, uh, knowledge base of the issue. And like, uh, city manager Guin said, we're pleased to have her here tonight. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Pam. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Pam.
Okay. Somebody wanna tell me how to operate this?
Sure.
Okay. And is it just the top one? The arrow to the right. Okay, got it. Okay.
Okay, we're good?
I knew I was gonna have to ask that question when I got up here.
No, I mean, every, every doohickey is different, right?
They are. Sometimes it's better, best if you can just blink, and it happens, but that's not, not very often. Um, thanks, Mike, for the introduction. My name is Pam Jean. I'm an Assistant General Manager at Sonoma County Water Agency. Um, I'm actually, uh, over our operations and maintenance, uh, for both our water system, wastewater systems, and flood control, uh, works. But I'm here tonight to talk to you about Potter Valley Project. So the Potter Valley Project, uh, we can advance the slide. Potter Valley Project, as Mike described, uh, real briefly, really briefly there, is owned and operated by Pacific Gas and Electric Company. Um, it's a project that's been in place for a hundred years, over a hundred years at this point. And prior to two thousand seven, um, water was moved from the Eel River to the Russian River at very significant volumes. Um, uh, historically, they used to move about a hundred and fifty thousand acre-feet of water from that watershed to our watershed through the project, generate power in Potter Valley itself. And then a lot of that water that wasn't used in Potter Valley by the farmers and, um, residents in the area ended up in Lake Mendocino, which is one of our two water supply reservoirs. Just to give you a little bit of scale, a hundred and fifty thousand acre-feet is about, uh, three times almost the water supply pool in Lake Mendocino. So it's, it's quite a bit of water. Um, so the, there's a little schematic up here on the slide for you to get an idea of how this works. But what, uh, P G N E did was they built a dam on the Eel River, uh, that was Scott Dam. That created Lake Pillsbury. That, again, has been in place, um, for about a hundred years now. They release water out of that dam. It flows downstream about fourteen or sixteen miles, I think it's sixteen miles, uh, to a location, uh, where there's a second dam. That dam temporarily sort of slows that water down. It allows it to enter a tunnel. The tunnel is through the mountain between the Eel River watershed and the Russian River watershed. And there's a elevation change between the two watersheds. So it flows downhill and creates the power in Potter Valley. And as I said, uh, quite a bit of that water, um, that's not used in Potter Valley itself ends up in Lake Mendocino, where it's stored and then later used, uh, not just by ourselves, but also by, um, all the folks that live, um, and/or farm between the city of Ukiah, all the way down to, uh, the, the ocean at, at Jenner. So for decades, as I said, um, about a hundred and fifty thousand acre-feet of water was transferred from the Eel River to the Russian River. Um, and in two thousand six, uh, P G N E's license that's issued by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission was amended. That amendment resulted in about, uh, half of the water no longer flowing from the Eel River to the Russian River, which impacted the hydrology pretty significantly in terms of operations of Lake Mendocino. Um, so that water is very critical, a very critical source of water to us. It's very critical for municipalities, for residents, as well as for agriculture. Um, even with the Potter Valley Project, even at these lower amount, flow amounts, um, even with the project, in drought years like we've experienced in the last few years, um, we have major issues with, uh, water availability, especially in the Upper Russian River because they don't rely on Lake Sonoma like, like we do. Um, so our customers from Windsor South benefit from Lake Sonoma. You're one of those customers that benefits from Lake Sonoma. But the system, the river system is an entire system. Sonoma County Water Agency operates both Lake Mendocino and Lake Sonoma in coordination with the U S Army Corps of Engineers. And we are required to maintain minimum flows in the river, um, in accordance with water rights permits that are issued by the state of California. And when that system gets out of whack, um, it causes all sorts of issues, not just for people, but also for the environment. So it's really important, uh, that this water, at some level, be maintained from the Eel River into the Russian River watershed. So P G N E, um, about a year and a half ago now, uh, their, their license that I just described, that's issued by the federal government, expired. So they are currently in the process of operating their project under annual licenses. But they also decided, um, as, as that license came to the point where it was going to expire, that they're no longer going to, uh, operate the project. They want to surrender the license and decommission the project. Um, decommissioning essentially means that they will quit operating it completely, perhaps removing all the facilities, although, uh, decommissioning can range anywhere from walking away from the project, uh, not removing things, to actually removing every piece of concrete that's out there. Um, P G N E has set some pretty hard deadlines that they're following. Uh, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission approved these deadlines in accordance with their schedule. So November, which is the month we're in right now, of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, they do. So November, which is the month we're in right now, of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, they do intend to release um, an initial draft of their surrender application and decommissioning plan. That document is, um, not going to be filed with FERC, so it won't be an official filing with FERC. But they do intend to release it so that the public and stakeholders and anybody else who's interested um, has the opportunity to look at what their plan is going to be and make comment on it. Um, I expect that they're gonna have somewhere around a thirty-day comment period, um, and we are certainly interested in seeing that. One of the things that, as they were, uh, preparing to, uh, to do this, they did let folks know in about May of this year, that if anybody wanted to have influence over what that application and decommissioning plan looked like, that they would, uh, need to provide a proposal, and I'll speak about that in a few minutes. In, so after May, after November of this year, the next deadline in their, in their schedule is May of twenty twenty-four. At that point, they expect to have revised the draft that we will all see this month and actually file that draft application with FERC at that point. Then between May and January of twenty twenty-five, they will, again, based on input that they've received, revise that draft that was filed and file a final license, uh, sorry, a final surrender application and decommissioning plan. So that's their schedule that we are trying to, our hardest to, uh, keep up with. So as a consequence of decommissioning the project, um, which would end the diversions to the Russian River, um, that it would be devastating for our river. Um, unless interventions are taken, um, like drastic cuts in water use, um, and drastic changes in in-stream flow requirements, Lake Mendocino would go dry in five of ten years, according to our modeling. So, uh, for customers like you, for Sonoma County Water Agency customers, as I said before, we do have Lake Sonoma. However, the system that, the Russian River system is an entire system, and we do rely on both reservoirs to meet minimum stream flow requirements, as well as uh, meet the demands of our customers, including the city of Sonoma. So anything, um, that occurs as a result of, uh, no longer having that transfer of water between the two basins could be, as I said, very devastating. It also could impact um, folks, not just folks that are our customers, but folks all up and down the Russian River. And it likely could, uh, result in very strict, uh, water reduction uh, requirements, um, that could be imposed by the state of California on us, because we do have water rights that we operate under, and they're able to come at us from that direction. Um, as well as the mandates, um, could and that could cause, in turn, could cause the city to, um, not be able to sell as much water. It could impact your revenues on, on your utility. It could also impact the future, uh, plans that you may have for growth within your community. So we are trying our hardest to, to keep this from happening. Um, and, uh, hopefully we will. Uh, I just want to mention one more thing. So as I mentioned, we do have this, uh, water rights that we have procured from the state of California. Um, those water rights would also be, and not just our water right, but everybody's water rights along the Russian River would be sort of turned, flipped on its head if this happens. So, um, in response to PG&E's, um, solicitation earlier in the year in the May timeframe, um, Sonoma Water, as Mike said, Sonoma Water, Mendocino Inland Water and Power Commission, and the Round Valley Indian Tribes, uh, put together a proposal in response to PG&E's deadline, which was the end of July. So they took, uh, we, we put together a proposal. You can see on the slide what the components of that proposal are. Um, we are currently working, um, to, as, as Mike said, advance a regional solution that will allow for both that diversion to continue, but for it to continue in a, what I'll call a fish-friendly way on the Eel River, which is the real issue with the current project up there. It's not fish-friendly at all. Um, we're hoping that PG&E will include this in uh, their surrender application. They have indicated to us that they are going to include it in their surrender application, but we don't know exactly what that's going to look like yet until we see it. Um, and we do feel that it's the best pass, best path forward for both the Russian River and the Eel River, um, if we can, um, implement it. Immediately after, um, we submitted the proposal to, uh, PG&E in July, we began working on the components that you see as part of this slide. And one of the first things that we've been working on is creating a joint powers authority. And we're hoping to have that to our board of directors, um, by the end of the year. So that's the plan on that. So in the short term, um, many of the things that I've already spoken to and some that I haven't yet are on this slide here, but uh, the J, we are looking at forming an interim J, J, joint powers authority. We would expect that as um, the project to continue the diversion and improve fisheries, um, passage on the Eel River continues, um, that, that JPA may change over time. Um, because this is a very big project, and we are just at the beginning of all this work. One of the biggest issues associated with, um, building a new project on the Eel River after PG&E removes its facilities is how to pay for it, as you may guess. And, um, we do, we do hope that, uh, we'll be eligible, uh, to garner some state and federal funding in order to do that work. Um, but we are, um, not sure about that at this point, but we're taking that into consideration as we look at the finances. We're working on a financial plan, um, but once the JPA is formed, I would expect that the JPA would begin to do that work instead of Sonoma Water doing it sort of individually. We actually aren't doing it individually. We are doing it with the partners, but we're not doing it as the JPA, so at this point. So in, in the short term, keys to success include getting that joint powers authority done, uh, figuring out financial capacity, who benefits from the water continuing, continuing to be, um, coming into the Russian River watershed, how you fund a capital project up there, how you fund the operations and maintenance of a project once it's put into place. Um, and addressing water rights is a really big issue associated with this, as I said. Um, even if, if the diversion continues, um, water rights are gonna be greatly impacted because of the, the timing and the amount of water as it comes into the water, Russian River watershed. So in the long term, um, keys to success include, um, adjusting. So as we go through this process, we do need to continually look at how to adjust to how to pay for everything, how to operate everything. Um, and we need to also be just talking to folks, um, to continually making sure that um, everybody understands what's going on and how they can, uh, be part of it and impact it. Um, we expect that any sort of business plan that's developed is gonna have to be modified as we go along, um, as we, as we know more. Um, because, for example, the design for the new facility on the Eel River is, um, not even going to be at a thirty percent design level until the spring of this, next year, twenty twenty-four. By the time you get to a hundred percent, the cost could change. It could look different, and so we just need to continue adjusting as we go along. And you might be wondering how you can help. So this is, uh, one of the reasons I'm here today. Um, we need to, we do, we do need help ensuring that this water resource doesn't go away. It's important to the Russian River watershed. It's important to your city. It's important to Sonoma County Water Agency. And we have been meeting with state and federal officials, um, who have ha, uh, they, of course, have some, a lot of influence over what may happen here. Um, so we could use your help in shorting up their support as well as, um, as you're out in the community, and if you get questions about Potter Valley Project, what is this? What does it mean if it goes away? Hopefully, this will help you be able to explain that a little bit to people. There's a, some really good information on several websites, um, uh, including Sonoma County Water Agency's website. Um, Pot- PotterValleyProject.org has some very good information on it, so there is quite a bit of information out there if you do have questions. And of course, I'm happy to answer questions at any time. So we're happy to speak to community, to community groups if you, uh, need us to do that, but, um, if you have any, any questions, again, just let me know. And with that, I think, Mike, I'm not sure if you're gonna come back up or not. Sounds like David's gonna talk.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Pam. And the one other item that we have on the agenda tonight along with this is a direction from the council for the WAC representative, which is councilmember Wellender, to, uh, sign a letter of support, uh, for this product, for this project to go along with the application.
Remind us all what WAC stands for?
I'm sorry, the Water Advisory Committee.
Water Advisory Committee, okay.
Thank you.
And there was another acronym in there, FERC?
Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
Thank you. Just for those following at home. Wonderful. All right, let's start with questions. Um, yes, Mr. Ding.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
I have learned a lot from you, uh, when we have a meeting, Water Advisory Commission. At any time when you, uh, made a presentation, you know, for me, it's kind of new, you know? I haven't known this kind of issue, a Potter Valley project, until, uh, two years ago. You know, it is kind of urgent. And before I make the comments, I wa, just want to express my anger to the PG&E. Yeah, they give us a lot of headache. And they just like kidnapping us, because water is just like food, you know, necessity. They didn't give our, the local people and the residents and the people, they are, are they the, the clients enough in the time to figure out? I totally understand our county's position. We are just the, you know, decision taker. But however, at this time, I think that it's time for us to amplify our own local voices. And PG&E, such kind of the organization, sometimes they are using business standards. Sometimes they just walk away. For example, right now, they surrender the license, just like based on our business law. Yeah, expired, we just walk away. But they never, uh, thinking about that, how much money they got in a subsidized, funded by federal government. Minor number is, um, billion dollars worth of the money. The money government gave to you, you should take care of the people instead of just for your business benefits. So that is basically the minor consideration. So, uh, this point, I already expressed to the consulting company many times, you know, I would like to take this opportunity passing this minor voice to them. So that, that's the reason when they make the comments and, uh, make the decision to the proposals, they should, and take the social responsibility on the top of the everything. They don't have very good, and the records in California. And another thing is, when we're gonna have the new, and the local, and the regional authority, regional and the joint authority, this organization, we need to think, and what kind of organization is the, look, right now looks like the county government and the tribe, and I'm not sure, another party. I would like to see in the future, this kind of the, and the organization could be the nonprofit and it could be users and invested, not like the, you know, PG&E, the, you know, mess up everything. So the, give our, the users, local, the people priority. Take, you know, it's a part of this project, not another visitor people are sitting in an office far away from the here. So that it's not, because it's on the life water, you know, we live on that, on the future generations, and they live on that. And the, also, I wanna suggest, this is an option, uh, this is an organization, and it shouldn't have taken a longer time. Not like than the timeframe, set up by the PG&E. Yeah, we need to figure out, because this is the very, very important issue. We needed the time to figure out. And all more than the comments and the concerns from our, the local residents, that is the number one. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ding. Yes. Questions, I'll go on this side, then we'll come back. Mr. Wellender.
I, I'm just needing to get a little bit of an education. So we have a facility, and it's been, PG wants to stop. And there's no opportunity that we can't just take over the operation of the existing facility, or is it too antiquated and, or we don't know how to do it?
So our, our initial, um, assessment of it is that, yes, it's too antiquated. Um, there are seismic, very large seismic issues with the larger of the two dams, Scott Dam. Um, and, uh, I, us engineer types, um, are really looking at that, thinking we're not interested in owning and operating that dam, which is a huge liability. Um, there are folks that, um, have properties around Lake Pillsbury who would like to see that dam stay in place. Um, but they don't have the ability to sort of take it over. Um, I don't think that, um, from a financial standpoint, they could do it, or from a risk liability standpoint, they could do it. So we are looking at, um, PG&E, essentially, our proposal is PG&E would take their facilities out minus the diversion works, which we would then take over with a new diversion facility on the Eel at the lower of the two dams, the downstream dam. So, um, that's what we, we've been looking at.
I'd like to carry on the passion of my fellow councilman, Mr. Ding, regarding our, my confusion about PG&E. When I read, it says, uh, under the impacts, Lake Mendocino is predicted to go dry about five out of ten years. If it's a direct result of the decommissioning of this facility, that's not a very good PR move in my mind as far as PG&E, and it seems right now that they are still in a P, a public relations deficit, particularly when you look at the kind of, uh, feel-good commercials that they're saying, now we're underlining, uh, undergrounding lines because it's more cost-effective than being sued in the billions. So I, I guess I'm very disappointed in, in PG&E being so cavalier. If, if this isn't truly the impact, and, and it, is, is there any opportunity for us to raise a, a, a more effective voice with them? Uh, or are they just basically saying, we're big, you're small, we're gonna do what we want?
I, I can't answer that part of the question. I can just tell you that, um, they're in this Federal Energy Regulatory Commission process now. And, um, they've let the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission know that they're going to surrender their license. And so they can't turn back at this point, so.
And, and the Federal Regulation Office turns a blind eye to the impact of this deregulation. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I don't, I've never worked with them before, so I don't, I don't know exactly how they treat the social issues and this type of issue.
Okay.
So.
I better stop.
Thank you, Mr. Gurney.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Um, interesting. My question is, are there any other proposals on the table other than Sonoma County?
That's a, that's a really good question, and no, there's not. So, and let me be clear, the proposal's not just Sonoma County Water Agencies, it's us and and, and Mendocino County interests, as well as the Round Valley Indian Tribes, who, um, their reservation is in the Covelo area.
Ms. Farah Rivas?
Just, I mean, this is a lot for my own cu- curiosity, but and probably you may not have a sense yet, but, but have, do you have a, do you have a sense of the anticipated cause um, that this project would have, and how long it would take once, you know, the project was Once, you know, the project was planned, was, once we were able to buy the property, how long it would take?
So I don't really have a good sense on the timeline because what it's going to require is that PG&E has to get through their process and get to an order from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission before they will start spending money to determine how they're going to remove their facilities. So, once they have an order, they will start doing design work to figure out how to remove those facilities. And then, at that point, once we know their timeline, we can work with them in order to build our facility where their facility was. My guess, as far as cost goes, is it's literally tens of millions of dollars for us to both sort of change up what is there, make it more fish-friendly, as well as build a diversion structure. So that's, it's in the tens of million dollars range.
And what is ideally, I would hope that if we were to move in this direction, that there would be a contract with PG&E around the sale, which would potentially also require their cooperation and collaboration with the decommissioning process, as well as the building of the new, the new site?
Yeah, absolutely. So in order for the, for the project works that we would like to have, in order to continue the diversion, there has to be a business transaction with PG&E. So the JPA, or what Councilmember Dean referred to as the regional entity, that entity has to enter into a contract with PG&E to say exactly what they're taking versus what PG&E is going to deal with. That entity doesn't have to deal with all of it. It can be sort of bifurcated, yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think I started the meeting by saying that this is my Alexander Valley all-day-long work-study session. So I was at the LAFCO meeting today, where the proponents of creating a water district in the Alexander Valley were there. And you mentioned earlier that, you know, we benefit from Lake Sonoma, and most of the cities and unincorporated areas south of, I believe you said Windsor, benefit. But Alexander Valley does not. And Cloverdale as well, is that correct?
Cloverdale, Geyserville.
Geyserville, thank you.
And all the way up, you know, to the city of Ukiah.
Right.
Including Redwood Valley.
And I don't mean to cut out my, our friends in Mendocino County. But since I was at the LAFCO for Sonoma County, and it was Alexander Valley. And in fact, I did a lot of work in Potter Valley and in Round Valley. Very few people have been out there, I can tell you stories. All right. So, you know, they want to create this water agency. There's no water agency there. And how, how would that, this help or hurt? You know, something, you know, and I'm not asking you to opine whether or not it's a good idea or a bad idea to create a water agency. But there has to be something there that takes care of the people who live in these areas. How would this proposal help or hurt the people in our, in our northern communities? In Sonoma County and, of course, in Mendocino as well?
And you mean the proposal that, that Sonoma County, Mendocino County and Round Valley Indian tribes submitted?
Yes.
So that, the way it, the way it would help, the way we envision it helping is that, number one, that the water continues to flow to the Russian River. It's not going to be at the amounts or the volumes that it was before, but hopefully it will continue. Those folks in Alexander Valley, all the way up to the city of Ukiah, are very reliant on this water. In the summertime, they have access, many folks have access to water that comes from the Potter Valley Project into the Russian River watershed. It's passed through Lake Mendocino, it's not stored, it's passed through the reservoir and made available to them in the summertime. So one of the really complicated things about the proposal is that we, we are assuming that Scott Dam is going away, which means that that reservoir on the Eel River won't be there for summertime flows. So one of the really complicated things is how do you make water available in the summertime when you don't have that water coming from the Eel River? So we are, we don't have an answer to that yet. That's something that we need to talk to all the folks who Russian River Water users about. But we're hoping that we can figure out a solution to that so that they don't have an issue of not having water in the summertime. And that's, in my mind, that's probably the biggest benefit to them is that summertime water still being available to them. Might not be every year. It might be not available in some years, in very dry years. Maybe not even very dry years, but dry years. But we're hoping that, that we can find a solution to that, and that's the whole point of the project, so.
Yes, and so Ukiah has a water district. Hildsburg does. So they have people that are, you know, hired to look out for them and work with you and so forth. So I'm just sort of also telling the story of what, what I learned today in this context, and that there's a large portion of our county, mainly agricultural, that there is no water district there. And they're, they're about to run out of water because of this situation. And they need, they don't have the infrastructure either. So it's, it's a very complicated situation, and I admire you for just tackling it, for one thing, because there's, there's a lot at stake here. So let me see if there's any questions or comments from the public, and then we'll bring it back to the council for possible action. Okay, and so I see one person standing up, and we're gonna have to ask you to just step aside for a moment while Mr. Alabac gets to the microphone and asks his questions, or comments, I should say.
Thank you. I'm Fred Alabac, Eighth Street East, and I hope that someone will take up these questions so that they could be maybe answered this evening. I'd just like to say that I don't know why the items that I want to hear always last. They're always last. But anyway, I'm curious if the Sonoma Water, Urban Water Management Plan accounted for this eventuality? Because we already knew that there was 60,000 acre feet versus 150,000. And so I think the UWMP lasts till 2035. So I wanted to ask, Mike, if the city's UWMP and Sonoma Water has accounted for this, this possible loss of water? And if so, if the county housing element and Rena and stuff are contingent and consistent with the Urban Water Management Plan, which says that there is enough water for current projected growth? So that's, that's curious to me because it seems like this, this could be like, along with fire evac, this is like the next big NIMBY bludgeon, you know, when this comes out. So that's a little concerning to me. So I'd like to, to, you know, find out where things really stand with the UWMP, et cetera, et cetera, so that we have some objective sense of how much water there is. I do know that, that the, that from the Sonoma Aqueduct has been, the acre feet per year has been reduced by many thousands of acre feet per year, and that savings is able to support more people. And I was talking with my partner this evening before I came down, and she said that Los Angeles is doing tremendous water savings with tons of people. So I think that we should be able to do more with less here and not use this here as like an idea to, you know, build another wall around Sonoma Valley. Let's see, so that's, that's my question there. Let's see, and so I guess Scott Dam is going away. That was another question I had. So another question is, so is PG&E expected to pay for that Scott Dam going away? Thank you.
Okay, and I think those, we can, when we come back, I think Pam drafted the questions down, and we'll, we'll find out. Are there any, anyone on Zoom?
Mayor, before we go to Zoom, can I request a one-minute break?
Yes, of course, one-minute break.
Thank you.
Let's, let's just make that a five-minute break so that we all can have a one-minute break.
Thank you.
One-minute break for you, and you, and you, and you. All right, we are in recess.
Does his dad work at the county?
I think so.
I don't think I'll be able to.
I mean, I know, named Curie Pay, who used to work at the county. Like, if he's not his dad, I'd be very surprised. It's got its name, because that's where his dad is. I know exactly where he is. It's a cool white house on the corner.
Yes, yes.
Oh, it's just something.
They can draw a public works house. And they do it for long, city-by-city parks. Today is the Wednesday in Sonoma. Tomorrow, this is the afternoon.
Very unfortunate.
At the time, we know, stand by.
I'm over here, myself and all. And we know each other, and we do each other's business.
No, it's good to be here, it's so cool.
I want to find somewhere for, where to go.
Somewhere north or south.
We are back. When last we left off, we were about to have, see if there was anyone on Zoom who had any questions. And I just want to remind people that when you make a comment, please ensure that your comments pertain to the item being considered. In this case, we're discussing water. If your comments do not pertain to the item being considered, we will discontinue the connection. All right, and with that, yes?
First, we'll bring in Tom Conlin.
Please.
I have the comment period segmented so much, I'll try to remember what I was, what I had in mind. I do appreciate the questions of the council members and the mayor of the, and the presentation from the water agency. And also, I think Mr. Alabac raises some, some points that ought to be taken into account as well. I'm not sure about where that NIMBY bludgeon might be. I've been looking for it. Mostly, I've been feeling is, I follow the legislature, the NIMBYs have been getting bludgeoned pretty badly the last couple of years in the legislature. But I, I, I want everybody to, you know, those of us who've been looking and following the Potter Valley Project for its, well, in my case, for its history, but my career history. But in the last five years, as we've been preparing for its decommissioning, you know, we are at the end of the pipe. And so Sonoma Valley's perspective on this will be very different from other stakeholders throughout the network. And that network goes down to Marin County on a different pipe. It also goes to the North County, which is, we heard the focus of the presentation earlier. It's gonna be costly. Tens of millions, millions of dollars is the current estimate. I wouldn't be surprised if it was more than that when everything is done. And we need to be mindful And we need to be mindful down here in Sonoma Valley that we are, we too are going to have water constraint concerns. We're going to need to invest ourselves here in the valley, in our groundwater sustainability improvements, in the development of act, of resources at Sonoma Developmental Center, in our investments in conservation, Purple Pipe Recycling Water. And so, the question of who pays and who benefits is really going to be very important for us. Um, to date, no one has really been willing to step up and pay, uh, for this, for this project. And I think there's a serious risk that the only financially viable solution is going to be to expand very substantially the number of payers, taxpayers, rate payers, fee payers, et cetera, beyond the relatively small number who will be the most direct beneficiaries. And so, while I think it's probably prudent to go ahead and, and sign the letter and to move forward with the recommendation for this JPA concept to move forward, I think that the, we need to send a message to those who are negotiating the agreement with PG&E that we need very transparent, a great deal of transparency in, in what benefits will accrue to us down here at the end of the pipe. Um, one last thing, you know, there, historically, there have been a lot of illegal water diversions along the Russian River. Um, I understand the DA's office is supposedly investigating those after really too many years of looking the other way. So, that's, that's a possible benefit as, uh, in the process unfolding right now. But, um, I'm glad Mayor Lowe has been looking into the LAFCO issues and the water agency formation up there, and I look forward to a, 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 a good decision on this matter as, as it moves forward in the next couple of years. So, thank you for, uh, the opportunity to comment on it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Conlin. Okay.
Next, we have Leo.
Okay, Leo. That is the end of public comment. Let's bring this back to the council. If you wanted to come forward, we'll, um, see if there is, uh, an action to be taken.
There's some questions that.
Yeah, yeah. If you could please address Fred's question, that would be great.
Yeah, um, I apologize, but I am not as familiar with the Urban Water Management Plan for our agency as I probably should be. I work, uh, on, in operations, not in planning, so, um, so I don't have an answer to his question about the Urban Water Management, Management Plan and 2035. Other than, I do know that it did fine that we had enough water, and that probably is because it was looking at Lake Sonoma in combination with Lake Mendocino and not, not just the upper portion of the river, part of our supply. Um, as far as, he made a comment about bigger reductions being possible. I just wanted to share a, a little factoid with you that, um, you know, several years ago, many years ago now, um, we served about 65,000 acre feet in a year to our customers. We currently serve about half of that to our customers, regardless of all of the, um, you know, communities that have grown and such. Um, so, we have done a bang-up job of water use efficiency in Sonoma County. Our customers, um, are always on this, and it's really amazing how much work that they've done and how, how well they've done it. So, I just wanted to share that. Um, we, uh, were one of the very few communities during the last drought that met the government's request for water use reductions. Um, most communities did not, but ours did. So, everybody that lives here should be very, very proud of that. Um, and the last thing that he asked, uh, at least the last thing I wrote down, was about whether or not PG&E would be, uh, the ones who, uh, would be paying for removal of Scott Dam, and the answer to that is yes.
Okay, great. Um, so, we'll bring this back to the council. Um, the request, uh, from staff is to support, um, the letter that, uh, our representative, Mr. Wellender, will carry. Is there a motion? Or discussion?
Well, I'll move that we, uh, support a letter of support for the proposal.
I'll second that. Okay. Moved in second. Questions? Yes?
More of a comment. I think this is a topic that, uh, we should all get kind of passionate about and be pretty creative, and I'd like to challenge the staff to give us some guidance on what we as a council can do going forward in either public education or simply being a voice.
Okay, great. I know that other, um, other cities are doing this and doing the letter. Um, I was with, uh, Susan from, um, Katati today, who's, they, they also sent a letter. She's also on the agency as well. So, um, I think there's a coordinated effort, and we'll be part of it. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk would call the roll, please?
I would like to, the, you know, if not possible, in this in the latter, we can, uh, you know, the, put some more attention to our local and the residents. This is seriously issue. And, you know, Pam just said, yeah, in the future, you know, we hope water flows. We need a, something to guarantee. And the, and also, our, in the cities, 85% of our water supply from the here. So, the, we heavily depends on this, so now our situation is a difference. I suggest, uh, if you can include that a minor comments in this latter, it should be the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ding. Um, my understanding is that it's a joint, many other agencies are signing as, a, a letter that is, uh, similar, and so, um, I don't know if we, we can. There is a motion. We're, we're having discussion on the motion. So, we, it is, his comments are in order, but I don't think we can change that at this point, is what I'm trying to let Mr. Ding know. But we can do other things from us.
Okay.
But the joint letter has to be a joint letter. But we can do something else in addition. I don't see a problem with that. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. If the clerk would call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Gurney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Ding?
Aye.
Councilmember Faravas?
Aye.
Mayor Lowe?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so, we are at public comment. If there are people on there that have already commented, we have already, you know, told them that they, they're out of order. Um, that's that. But if there are any more, let's, we can.
We, we had three, uh, three members, um, on Zoom that wanted to do public comments, so I, I recommend at this point, we only allow those three.
Those three? Very good.
And then we'll follow the same rules.
Yep, absolutely. Here we go.
Bringing in Darius.
Next?
Next, we have DJ.
Speak. I'm going to try to speak respectfully. You know, I just would like to say, Mayor.
Next?
Last, we have Greg.
Hello, can you? Well, uh, you know, you shouldn't let people have the opportunity to speak. You just let that, cut that previous person off. I didn't hear him cussing or swearing or nothing. And, uh, you know, it's disgusting that this town is, you know, pretty much working for the ADL.
All right, such ends public comment. Um, I think we're at the end of our agenda. We don't usually end this way. But, uh, um, motion to adjourn, so move, and see you all soon. Thank you so much.